Ready to go. City Council Meeting of Monday, June 22, 2015. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Councilmembers Ratty. Absent. Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt. Absent. City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Is Councilwoman Ratty calling in?
Supposed to.
Okay, well, we'll just...
Do I have to do anything for this?
Keep on truckin'.
It's light as candy.
And then, do I have to do anything?
So, we're gonna continue on, okay. We have a quorum, so... Next, we have invocation, if you'd all stand by, Pastor Pete Bosler, Crosswind Assembly Church of God. Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you. That's great. Lord, you are the giver of all good things. You are the giver of wisdom. You created sparks. You created Nevada. You created our world. And so, we ask you to just give us great wisdom in this council as they run this good city. Touch the mayor. Touch all the council members and all the heads of departments that are here. Lord, we love you and we thank you for giving us victory and prosperity and abundance in our town. We ask all this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Pastor, for those kind words. I appreciate it. Ms. Bybee, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please turn me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Anyone? You're right. Yeah, well, I could skip over that one. I got it easier. Anyone for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the... For approval of the agenda. Before we do that, I would like the agenda... Whoever approves, makes the motion, to move 9.7, which is the consideration and possible approval of a settlement. If we could move that down under 12.1, which is possible to move to a closed-door session if there's someone on the council that wants to have some more discussion about 9.7, we can adjourn and then come back and vote on that. And then, we can make a decision whether we want to do that or not. So, if you'd include that in your motion, please. Mr. Lawson.
Yeah, we move to approve the agenda as the mayor has just spoken in moving 9.7 down to below 12.1.
Do we have a second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to number six. Consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of June 8, 2015. Any additions or deletions, corrections? Okay, looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson.
To approve.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 6.1 minutes for meeting June 8, 2015. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, announcements, presentations, recognition items, proclamation, Parks and Recreation Month. Tracy's here to do that, okay. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Sparks, Nevada, and whereas our parks and recreation facilities and programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation facilities increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation, natural recreation areas, improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife. Parks and recreation provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas we recognize the vital contributions our employees and volunteers in parks and recreation who keep public parks clean and safe for visitors, provide events and programming for all ages and abilities, advocate for more open space and better trails, and ensure that parks and recreation facilities are safe and accessible places for all citizens to enjoy. Now, therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim July 2, 2015 as Parks and Recreation Month. Thank you. Are you playing a game? You got a game?
That's Julia.
Thank you. Okay, Julia.
Thank you, Mayor Martini, Martini, and council members. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. I'd just like to take this opportunity to not only thank you for your ongoing support of Parks and Recreation, but also the Parks Division and Park Maintenance Division of our Community Services Department. Like us, they're small but mighty and have a lot of acreage to maintain and have done a great job. And I really appreciate working with them to maintain the great facilities and 60 park system that we have. Thanks.
Thanks, Tracy. Great job. And maybe a quick report on this last weekend, how the races went out at the Marina?
The U.S. Open Water Cross was held this past weekend, I believe, our fourth or fifth year now. And the producers are still very pleased with our venue. It's one of their favorites, which is pretty hard to compete with Florida as far as venues. But they plan to be back. They had a very successful event. A little windy yesterday made it a little rough. They had to pull all their tents down. So, again, they bring in athletes from all over the world to this event and this tour. They're doing online streaming now that I tried to get out to you by email. That's the first thing. So, they've also entered into an agreement with CBS Sports to do some televised show next year. So, they're really, as producers, have grown a lot and are really putting our name out there across the country, and we enjoy working with them.
Great. I think that was a... That's a good... That's a good event, and it's growing every year. I drove by there yesterday about 10:00 in the morning, and it looked like a whitewater event out there. Some waves everywhere.
And they were challenged, for sure.
Yeah, I saw.
Yesterday.
Comments, Ms. Bybee?
Tracy, I just wanted to thank your department for the work they're doing with 39 North, your staff, the setup for the marketplace on Thursday nights. Great, you know, great setup, great, the whole event. And it's new, but mighty. And we're hoping that we spread that word so that more people come out on Thursday night and then Saturday with the food trucks twice a month. But your staff working, seeing them in action. I appreciate the work they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Anyone else? Okay, thanks. Okay, next, we have consent items 8.1 through... 8.9. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Smith?
Nope. Ready to make a motion?
Go ahead.
Move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.9.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.9. Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously with those present. Ms. Ratty on the phone is an aye. Okay. Moving on, 9.1. Consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of an appointment to the Civil Service Commission from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Any questions? Mr. Driscoll's gonna do anything or no presentation?
Do you want me to do a quick presentation? Otherwise, it's your appointment, sir, and we can just follow your lead.
Okay, let's just... Council has any questions? Okay, if not, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to confirm the appointments of Stephen Burley and Louis Doria to the Civil Service Commission as recommended by Mayor Martini.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the appointments to Civil Service Commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Please display. Ms. Ratty?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. 9.2 is consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointments to Parks and Recreation Commission from the following pool of listed applicants in alphabetical order. Questions? Comments? Looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Move to confirm the appointments of Angela Fuss and Andrea Tavner to the Parks and Recreation Commission as recommended by the mayor.
Mr... Or Ms. Bybee, excuse me.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.2, the appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. 9.3. Consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointments to the Sparks Planning Commission. Questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to confirm the appointment of Frank M. Peterson to the Sparks Planning Commission.
You have a second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Bybee, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 9.3 to the... For the Commissioner Frank Peterson to the Planning Commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Looks like the mayor's show here today, doesn't it? Let's move on to something more important, then. Consideration and possible adoption of Resolution Number 3283 to augment the fiscal '15 budget of the Parks... The Rec. and Parks District III and impact fee service area funds. Welcome, how are you?
Stacy Hammering, Budget Administrator. It's still not on, huh?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it is.
Thanks, sorry. All right. I'm bringing you another budget augmentation for two different funds. This is more year-end cleanup just to avoid budget violations. We have one that we're looking for $146,000 in our Rec. and Park District III fund where we needed to make a refund to Sparks Development this fiscal year for residential construction tax that they paid cash for when they actually had credits available. And when that all was discovered, we needed to refund the money that causes an expenditure in the fund which we did not have budgeted. So, we had the funds available to make this. Now, need to augment the budget to avoid a violation. The second augmentation is in our Impact Fee Service Area I Fund. This is where we paid Red Hawk Land Company, formerly Loeb, for Fire Station 5. We've collected more public... More impact fees for public facilities than we expected and therefore, need to remit them to them until we've paid them back for Fire Station 5. This could also cause a budget violation. So, again, funding available, just fixing the budget.
Questions for Stacy? Okay, if not, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 3283 to augment the fiscal year '15 budgets of the Rec. and Parks District III and Impact Fee Service Area I Funds.
Do we have a second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Bybee, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 9.4, Resolution Number 3283. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. 9.5. Consideration and possible approval of an agreement between West Care Nevada Inc. and the City of Sparks relating to the provision of funds for the Community Triage Center. Welcome, George.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. George Graham, Housing Specialist, for the record. What I have before you for consideration is the contract agreement of West Care Nevada to perform the... For the CTC, which is the Community Triage Center. And they're the only nonprofit, really, in the northern Nevada region that perform these services. And the services provides a great relief for our police, our hospital staff, emergency room, a lot of the inebriate and some of the mentally ill receive a great service through the West Care operation of the Community Triage Center. And so, I was bringing this before you for consideration. If there's any questions or anything, I...
Okay, questions for George? Ms. Bybee?
George, is this already included in our budget? Are we already budgeted for this item?
Yes. Yes, it will be... Yes, it is. For the $87,000, the impact for our general fund is $87,000, and there's a portion of $12,400. So... I'm sorry, I got that backwards. The $87,000 will be of the CDBG allocation. The $12,000 and so... $12,697 will be for the general fund.
Okay, because in our... The financial impact here on our agenda shows $87,000 from the city's general fund. I just wondered if this was an additional allocation or something that's already included that we budgeted for already? If we budgeted for or if it's something extra?
No, it's not extra. It's something we have budgeted for, yes.
Okay, so the $87 is from the general fund or not?
Yes, $87,000 from the general fund. I apologize. I had two different... I apologize, yes.
Okay, that was another question. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, seeing no questions, looking for a motion or comments? Mr. Smith?
Move to approve the funding agreement between the City of Sparks and West Care Nevada Incorporated for operation of the Community Triage Center.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve 9.5, the agreement with West Care. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thanks, George. This is a good...
Thank you.
A good program that we've been involved in for three or four years, I think. And it takes a lot of pressure off of our emergency centers and gives the police and fire somewhere to take people where, instead of running them through emergency and then them sending them somewhere else, they go directly to the Triage Center, I think. I think it works really good. All the hospitals in the area donate, I believe, to this $500,000 apiece or something in that range. And it's... I think it's really a good program. I really do. I'm so happy that we help fund this every year, so... Thanks, George.
Thanks.
Okay, next is 9.6. Consideration and possible approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement between the City of Sparks, Washoe County, and the City of Reno for operation of the Community Assistance Center, CAC. Go ahead, George.
Good afternoon. Thanks again, George Graham, Housing Specialist. This agreement is for the CAC, which is the Community Assistance Center. And it's the interlocal agreement between all jurisdictions. And this year, we see Reno is contributing cash. Last year, they... It was in-kind. So, all three have stake in it as far as cash and in-kind services for the operations of the Community Assistance Center. So... And it's based off a formula, approved formula as far as how much each jurisdiction put in, whereas the county was 1% and the city of Reno, City of Sparks, is half of 1% off of property tax equivalent.
Half of one cent, I think it is. Right, George?
Half of one, yes. One cent of the property tax. So, I was, again, bringing this for your consideration. I apologize, I had gotten between the two.
Yeah, I see the number you got mixed up.
I apologize for that.
All right.
Trying to read both.
Relax, George, we're with you. Ms. Bybee, go ahead.
Okay, so just so I'm clear. So, the $111,000 comes out of our block grant money?
The $99,000 of it comes from the block grant.
Oh, excuse me. 99... Our full allocation is $111,000.
Yes.
So, $99,000 is block grant.
Yes.
So, out of the general fund is just the $12,697.
Exactly.
Which is in the budget, again, also.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve the cooperative agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 9.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Again, I think this is a good program for us to be involved with and help out with the center over there. So, I appreciate that. Okay, 9.7. We're gonna move to pass Number 12.1 and move to 9.8. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a bargaining agreement between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Fire Chief Officers Unit.
Good afternoon. Chris Severson, Administrative Services Director, for the record. You have before you a bargaining agreement between the Fire Chief Officers and the city for the period of July 1, 2015 through June 30 of 2017. In summary, it does provide for three cost-of-living increases starting in January of '16 for 1.5% January, 1.5% July, and 1.5% January of '17. It does increase the longevity for all employees in the unit to $5,000. Previously, it was a grandfathered rate for some and non-grandfathered rate for others. Increase in tuition reimbursement and the ability to cash out annual leave. That's the substantive changes of the contract. What I'd like you to know is that the city and the Chief Officers Unit began negotiating early in the year, this year. It was a very, very beneficial and good contracting sessions. And we have reached mutual agreement. The Fire Chief Officers Union has ratified this contract, and we are asking for ratification from the city council. One thing that should be noted is on June 1, the governor signed SB 241, which is a new legislative action that covers collective bargaining. And there are certain provisions of this contract that will... That may need to be looked at as a result of 241. I do have a commitment from the Fire Chief Officers Union that we have reopening rights to discuss those matters. We would like the contract as it is now to go forward with reopening to let us pursue the impacts of 241 further.
Questions? Ms. Bybee?
So, question on because we've got a time crunch here with SB 241. If we approve this today, do we have to have... Are we obligated, is it July 1, that SB 41 in its entirety, in order to be in compliance with state law? What is our timeline that we have if we're opening those items for renegotiation so that we're not in violation of state law?
SB 241 was actually signed into effect on June 1. But we have... We're at a crossroads right now where we're still getting interpretations on the law. So, we have... Both the Fire Chief Officers and the city are having their legal counsel look at it to see what may need to be done. So, we're kind of in an exploratory stage right now. We do have several provisions under the contract that should we be in violation of any law, there is... It does become null and void, the sections of the contract. But we're trying to work through it in an amenable situation.
So, technically, if it was June 1, our current contracts are in violation of what the new law is. There's no, like, window when they sign it into law? Is it, like, it's immediate? There's no timeframe they gave us of when it has to be?
It is immediate. Unfortunately, I don't think that they took into account that there could be different interpretations of what that law means. So, we're trying to figure that out right now.
Okay. And working with LTB or whoever at the state level so that we know we're not in... They know we're working on it and we're not found in non-compliance? And I don't know what would the state do?
That's our goal.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
First of all, I want to thank the chief officers because we've heard nothing but good things about the negotiations on this and how smoothly they went. So I move to approve the bargain agreement between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Fire Chief Officers Unit for the contract period of July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2017.
Ms. Bybee.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.8, bargaining contract with the Sparks Fire Chief Officers Unit. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay, 9.9, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a bargaining agreement between the City of Sparks and the IAFF Local 1265.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Chris Severson, for the record. You have before you a bargaining agreement which covers the firefighters for the city through IAFF 1265. This is an agreement for 2015 through 2017, July 1st through June 30th, a two-year agreement allowing for two cost of living increases, 1% each on July 1st of 2015 and 2016. We did change a few provisions of the contract in regards to education incentive, longevity, added deferred comp match, and again, allowed for the cash out of some annual leave. Again, with this contract, we are subject to SB 241, and the Fire Chiefs Union have given me their commitment that they will agree to a re opener as well to address these issues. I must also mention, as I did with the Fire Chief Officers, this is a very productive, very cooperative negotiation sessions. And I know the president of IAFF is in the back here and want to let him know that his negotiating team represented him well, as did, I believe, the city team. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions? Ms. Bybee?
No questions.
Nope, okay.
Lot of motion.
Any questions, anyone? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the bargaining agreement before, between the City of Sparks and the IAFF Local 1265 for the contract period of July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2017.
Do we have a second? Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve 9.9. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.10 pursuant to NRS 241.033 and City Managers Employment Agreement, a review by the city council of City Manager Stephen Driscoll's performance as city manager, including character and professional competence as it relates to his performance as city manager, and to discuss and possibly approve an extension of his employment agreement through 7/31/2016 and consideration and possible approval of salary adjustment. Mindy, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mindy, of all human resources manager, for the record. We recently solicited from the mayor and the city council information about the city manager's performance, and it's compiled in a report. We also included in this agenda item a survey of salaries of similarly positions in the region, and then finally, a sample contract that needs to be decided again today if you would like to renew the contract and what salary you would like to renew it at. I do have one update for the survey. There was a recent change. The city manager of Reno got a 2% increase last Wednesday, as well as a $6,500 bonus. So I did change the survey results, and our city manager now, instead of 8% overmarket, is now 7% overmarket. So I do have an update. Do I hand it to you, Theresa?
No.
So with that, do you have any questions?
Questions? Comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve? Overall, I thought that the evaluations were very good. You only had one that needs an improvement, and everything else was meet the requirements or exceeded the requirements, so good job on that. Are you, are you seeking a raise of 2%?
So that is up for the council to decide. We did recently give a 2% increase to the department heads, so to keep in conjunction with your, the salary structure, you might want to consider that.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm considering.
Ms. Bybee.
Steve, I'd just like to say especially as the newest member to the council and the rookie who needs lots of help and lots of direction, I appreciate your leadership and in directing me where I need to go and working with department heads and kind of bringing the whole City of Sparks together, and it really feels like a team, feels like a family. And I think the knowledge of your staff, but how you've worked with the staff and with the council, I appreciate it's made my transition, as I learned much easier, and I do, I appreciate. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Lawson.
I'm good, actually.
Okay. Well, I'll make a comment. You know, I've appreciated it, I think, more than anyone. I'm the oldest one on the council, been here the longest, had a very good relationship with the past city manager, a very close relationship, and I feel the same with Mr. Driscoll. Moved right in, didn't miss a beat, you know, been the assistant manager for 15 years, and it was a godsend to me and very easy transition for me to make because I had worked with him so much in the past. So I appreciate everything you've done, and it's been really a smooth transition, and I appreciate the working relationship that we have. You know, it's great for me, I come into work every day, I talk with Mr. Driscoll every day, so he's probably tired of it, but I enjoy the relationship and the constant conversation to find out what's going on, so I'm very appreciative. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you for your kind words, sir.
Julia, anything to say?
I just appreciate the city managers and the welcome of the city managers, and looking forward to continuing to open the land communications and moving forward. All good stuff.
Okay. Okay, questions, comments? Any discussion on salary? Mr. Lawson.
I think in comparison to the other entities, Mr. Driscoll is compensated just about perfectly.
Ms. Bybee.
So I have a question. Is the 2% included in what this sheet is that you presented us with?
It is not. It is the current salary.
It's not. I feel if we gave our other executive, if we've offered 2% for our other executives, I would like to offer comparable. I think that's in all fairness, we're doing it with our fire and our police, and, well, not police yet, but our other work groups and executives especially, that a 2%, I would like to propose.
Mr. Smith.
The bonus, the $5,000 figure, is that last year's or is that recommended for this year's?
Mr. Smith, that is not a bonus, that is a longevity amount. It's something that I carried with myself from the previous job, and it's similar to what the other department heads and all the rest of the employees in the city get.
Okay. So Councilman Bybee, is, are you making a motion or what are you doing?
Thanks.
Oh, I mean, you made a comment, and I didn't know if you were putting that in the form of a motion.
Hadn't made it in a motion, but I can, I guess I have one more. My personal feelings were recommending a 2%, that I can make into a motion, but I do have a question, too. You just said, city manager of Reno received what percent?
A 2% increase.
2% plus a bonus.
Yes, his bonus is determined by the council each year, and it was $6,500.
And do we have, we do not have a bonus?
He has a longevity, I think that's what he was talking about. It's a little different, we don't have a performance bonus in Steve's contract currently.
Okay, so that's, that's something different of the two city managers' contracts that they have that we do not. Do they have longevity?
They do not. They have a, just a performance bonus in theirs.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve an extension of the city manager's contract and also to add a 2% increase to the current contract that we're offering him.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith.
Just clarification, is that, give you an extension of one year on your contract? That's what you're seeking?
It does, one-year contract.
Okay.
And we'll do the same process next year. Thank you.
Okay. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, a motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve a one-year extension of the contract with a 2% salary increase.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Comments? I appreciate the motion that's on the floor. It's very gratifying, and I respect what was there. I would like to respectfully decline any pay increase at this time because we still have seven, we still have five labor contracts that have not been settled. Until, until those are settled, I don't feel like this year's work is done for me, and so I would prefer to not have that as part of this motion, and that at some point in the future, when all of the labor agreements are settled, then if it were the council's pleasure to do something that was similar until it was out there, I would feel much more comfortable with that, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. All right, looking for another motion. Ms. Bybee.
So do I need to withdraw my motion, then?
I think it dies because of lack of a second.
Oh, okay.
So we can start with a new motion, Mr. Smith.
Okay, how about just, I move to approve a renewal, one-year removal, renewal of the city manager's employment agreement. It's hard to say.
We're just too far.
Do you have a second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Yeah, you just had to open your mouth, didn't you? Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve a one-year extension on the manager's contract. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thanks, Steve, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Sounds the same.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Sure.
Steve Driscoll, city manager, for the record, thank you very much for this vote of confidence. It's a pleasure working for the citizens and for the council, and it's especially a pleasure because of the staff that I get a chance to work with and all the work that they do in order to make the city a better place, make it the city of choice, and I look forward to another year of, of working on behalf of the citizens and on your behalf. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to 10.1, public hearing, consideration of and possible adoption of Resolution 3284, making certain findings and providing consent for the redevelopment agency of the City of Sparks to exchange real property located in Victorian Square. Mr. Ornalis.
Mayor Martini, members of city council, Armando Ornalis, city planner. This item is, has a companion item on the redevelopment agency agenda, and the roles and responsibilities of the council and the redevelopment agency differ, as do the findings that we're asking you to make. With regard to the city council, the two tasks or the two responsibilities that this agenda item covers are, one, approval of a resolution that provides for the city council to consent to the exchange of property, both the acquisition and the disposition of property, and then, secondly, approval of the amendment or the agreement itself. So with regard to the transaction, all of it really hinges on a future city council action, which is a partial map to be considered by the council, I think, on July 27th, it's when city engineer John Martini will be bringing that map and a set of abandonments to the city council. So the agreement can be approved today, but in terms of its implementation, the council would have to make the appropriate findings with regard to the partial map on that later date. I'm going to try with these illustrations here to hopefully explain a transaction that is fairly complicated in some respects, but I hope you will agree is easier when we, when we show you these graphics. So just for purposes of orientation, right here on the north end, where I'm pointing, is the fountain. This is Avenue of the Oaks running through here, and then on the south here is Victorian Avenue. The plaza sits here, and the, the blue parcels are, are the existing parcels as they are out there today, or as configured today. The red hatched parcels are proposed parcels that would be created through the execution of the parcel map. In terms of what we're contemplating here, there's a series of abandonment, abandonments, which I'll show you more, in more explicit relief here in a minute, but on the east side here, we have this blue parcel, which is owned by Wolfhound Holdings, which is the entity that owns the Nugget. And that existing parcel would go away, and it would be replaced by this parcel in the red hatched area. And in a nutshell, we're essentially trading this area, which is public right of way and which would be abandoned through that future parcel map, for this strip on the north and east sides of the existing parcel. And the proposed parcel J is exactly the same size as the existing Wolfhound parcel. With regard to the plaza area, in 2010, we essentially did a similar exercise with the parcels north of what was formerly the B.C. Alley, which runs, runs here, and we reconfigured the area here and the area here, and we created this portion of the parcel, of the plaza. With this map, we're proposing to essentially have a single plaza parcel, and so we would be abandoning the area in between here and the area here in order to create that parcel P. Moving westward, the existing parcel is here, is the blue, this is a parcel that the redevelopment agency acquired from Pacific Pond Brokers several years ago, exactly for this purpose. You can actually see underlying this is a portion of the, of this north-south street and the parking here, and so we acquired it in part for, for public right of way, which is what would, what it would formally become with this parcel map, because this, this portion of the blue parcel here outside the red area would be dedicated from the redevelopment agency to the city as public right of way. The new parcel to be created would take public right of way on the west side of the, of the existing parcel and here from the Victorian Avenue right of way, and this would be the new proposed parcel I. So that's, that's essentially what the parcel map would, would do. The other piece of this agreement is a proposed exchange of this proposed parcel I on the west side here of the plaza for this parcel over here to the west, which is owned by Wolfhound Holdings. So what's proposed is a cashless transaction, we, that the new parcel I would go to Wolfhound, and we, and the redevelopment agency would, in return, get this parcel from, from Wolfhound Holdings. And with that acquisition on the part of the redevelopment agency, we could essentially combine it, the parcel 23, the one we would be receiving from Wolfhound, with these, these other three parcels along that half-block of Victorian Avenue, and then all of this, parcel 3, 13, and then 21 through 24, through a subsequent agreement that's contemplated, would be sold to Silverwing Development for their proposed Fountain House project. I did want to show you the, the abandonments that would be considered, and this just breaks those out so you can see exactly what is contemplated to be abandoned by the city in that future parcel map that will be brought to you in July by John Martini. So any questions about the maps?
Mr. Lawson.
So you're saying that the blue is proposed to be abandoned?
Uh, yes.
In the future?
Yes.
What's that going to do for our special events?
Well, you know, what we're gaining is, certainly we're gaining, I mean, this, this area is already available to us, but these two areas of abandonment will be incorporated into the plaza parcel. We will be giving up this area here to be incorporated into that new parcel, and as, you know, as you may recall, I'll show you here, what the redevelopment plan calls for is, is three parcels on either side of the plaza, these two in front of the theater, and then moving southward, one here where parcel 12 is, and then the new parcel I here, and then a set of matching parcels on the, on the east side here. So this is, these parcels are contemplated to be developed in the future as mixed-use parcels with retail on the ground floor. In terms of special events, you know, I think my, my general answer to that, Councilman Lawson, would be that, you know, as we, as we will be developing, you know, any number of these parcels over the next several years, we will be having to adapt how we, how we conduct our special events down there.
So will there be still the streets on either side?
Uh, yes, on either side of the plaza.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
So, and then we will, we still own parcel P?
Parcel.
The plaza area.
The plaza, yes, parcel P.
We're going to continue to own that?
Yes, that will be retained by the City of Sparks.
Okay, so then that makes my question, you've done, fill our land. Okay, thank you.
So with regard, with regard to the, the actions that we're asking the city council to take, one is basically under Nevada redevelopment law, you know, the, the redevelopment agency has, you know, the latitude to both acquire and dispel, dispose of property through sale or lease, but when we do that, the city council, as a legislative body for the city, has to provide its consent. So the resolution that's attached to this item is what provides for that consent essentially, and we're asking that with regard to the acquisition, that the council find that the acquisition benefits the redevelopment area and that there is not another reasonable means of financing the acquisition. In other words, you know, it's, it's pretty straightforward to say that this is a benefit to the redevelopment area. I think in terms of there not being another reasonable way to do this, you know, this was, this cashless transaction was the, the most straightforward way to do it, certainly. I don't know that there would have been another, another way to do this that would have been acceptable to all the parties. Certainly, the redevelopment agency did not want to be paying for this property that we're going to be acquiring, and certainly Wolfhound expressed their interest in not, or, you know, they were not willing to, to pay cash for the property that they would acquire from us. So this makes a lot of sense from, from the perspective of all the parties. In terms of the disposition, the disposition will allow the agency to assemble or to combine parcel 23 with 21, 22, and 24, and therefore have that, that full two-block area that we would then sell to Silverwing Development for their project. So that's, that's one action, is the approval of the resolution. And then the second is the party, that the city is a party to the agreement, you know, they, they have a role, obviously, in terms of the, the implementation of the agreement, and so you would be approving the agreement as the second action. And we would be looking for separate motions for, for those, or a two-part motion.
Questions? Ms. Bybee.
So Armando, the exchange of the two parcels, the one is worth appraised at $200,000, the other at $235,000. So we are, we in essence are $35,000 short in an exchange, it's uneven exchange, but is that compensated for because it's going to move forward our redevelopment plans and the Silverwing Development, which, which we want to all see happen? So is it, that, that's how we're able to do that, is because of the redevelopment plans it would facilitate that, even though we're not coming out dead even on the, on the exchange?
Based on the appraisals, correct. I mean, I think, you know, arguably, the, the exchange has, you know, has equal value, if you will, to, to the parties in different, in different, you know, ways, but, you know, there's value to both parties. And, you know, per redevelopment law, you know, if the council finds that this effectuates the redevelopment plan, then, you know, that, that's not an obstacle to, to doing this transaction as structured.
Because of the value, obviously, the value to us of making sure that the redevelopment plans go forward and that it just makes more sense for the other property, for the exchange, even though the money, the cash is not equal.
That's correct.
The value, the value to us would be.
We could have discussions about appraisals all day long, and, you know, the, the different parties will look at the appraisals, you know, through different lenses. You know, certainly there's an argument to be made that by acquiring parcel 23, you know, when, when it was valued, it was essentially valued, you know, as a standalone parcel versus its value when you, you know, when you're able to combine it with these different parcels, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a few comments. I want to talk about Mr. Witt here for a second. When Julia and I met with him for the first time on this project, the first question he asked was, how is the council and staff to work with? And he asked that question for a reason, so I hope we met or exceeded your expectations on this. Thank you. And Armando, I want to thank you for all the work you did on this. I know you worked some extra hours putting this together, it's not easy, but it all came together. And again, I want to thank the Nugget also for their cooperation in this whole land deal so we can move forward.
If I may, Mayor Martini and Councilman Smith, I wanted to thank Neil Crutch for helping with the discussions with the Nugget, and then John Martini for helping put the, the transaction together. And then I also wanted to note that Dan Reiser, who is legal counsel for Wolfhound, is here representing them, so.
Okay, questions? Any more questions? Okay, this, oops, it's about the hearing first, I gotta do a public hearing if you wanted to record. Okay. Okay, I want to open a public hearing. Anyone in the public want to speak to this particular item? Come on down, sir. Just give us your name for the record.
Mayor and members of the council, Dan Reiser with the law firm of Fenmore Craig. Thank you this afternoon, and I just wanted to briefly indicate that it's been a pleasure to work with Armando, and we are here to endorse the transaction and ask you to move forward as council, and then I won't come back down, but when you convene as redevelopment authority also. I would just want to amplify a little bit on what Armando said to Councilman Bybee. From Wolfhound's view, the appraisal differential is wholly made up by the fact that there is assemblage value here. The appraisers did not perform an assemblage value calculation, which would have said, what would happen if Wolfhound wouldn't allow that parcel to be acquired, and you would essentially have an island in what you're trying to otherwise develop? And assemblage value can frequently be anywhere from 10% to 40% higher. It can create that much more of a differential, and so from Wolfhound's view, we think Armando is absolutely correct, that there is equity here in both the first set of right-of-way changes to configure the parcels, and then in the second aspect of this transaction, where you have the two parcels that are exchanged. We'd be happy to answer any questions, and we're prepared to move forward.
Questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further comments, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Ms. Bybee.
Just a comment, I lost my, hang on, looking for the motion. A comment and then, and then a motion. I fully support this exchange. It's something we've been hoping would happen for a while. I think, I think it's beneficial to both parties. I think not leaving that island there, I think the value to Mr. Witt and to the great development that's going to come there is very exciting for the city, and I also think that the property that Wolfhound will get and give them, four pieces of property that are going to have more potential, is also a really good thing. It just makes more sense. I'm in support of it, and I'm glad to see this moving forward so we can break ground and get some things moving in town.
Mr. Smith.
I was, I'll make the motion, I guess. I move to approve Resolution 3284 based on the information in the staff report and information brought forward during the oral presentation and public hearing.
Do I have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson, to approve Resolution 3284. Any further discussion?
Do you know?
Yes, go ahead, Julia.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to chime in quickly on the record that I'm super excited that this is moving forward. This project has a lot of moving pieces, and again, I want to thank the staff for having a sense of possibility, and it can't be done without getting all of this done, because we're moving very quickly, and to thank Jerry Witt for bringing the project forward, and the Nugget for their cooperation as well. Thanks so much.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, now the motion on the property exchange. Mr. Smith.
I move to approve the Victorian Square property exchange agreement for execution by the city.
Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee, to approve the property exchange. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Jay, you ready to go? Keep going, I guess, and thanks to the Nugget. This is, this is a good example of people getting together and doing what's beneficial for each other. I think both parties here are going to benefit tremendously from what we just did today, so thank you guys for working it out. Thank you to the Nugget. Thanks, Jay, for all you've done and all you're going to do. We appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to 12.1, Possible Motion to Adjourn to a Closed Door Session. Anyone want to go into closed door before we vote on 9.7?
I do not.
Anyone? Okay. Let's move on to 9.7, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor Martini, Members of the Council. Doug Thornley with the City Attorney's Office. September of 2009, a convoy of Sparks police officers were in Fernley doing tactical training. On their return trip, apparently, there was an incident where one of the vehicles in the convoy cut off a vehicle that was towing a horse trailer north on 95A. That vehicle followed the convoy for approximately 15 miles to the first stoplight at the intersection of Main Street and 95A in Fernley, where one of the passengers of the vehicle that was cut off jumped from the vehicle and attacked one of the vehicles in the convoy. After several minutes of attempting to remove this gentleman from the, from his vehicle, Sparks officers were able to extricate him and place him into handcuffs. As a result, the City of Sparks and those police officers were sued under the Fourth Amendment. We filed a motion for summary judgment based on an extensive internal affairs investigation that we had undertaken into the incident. The United States District Court for the District of Nevada dismissed the claims, and that ruling was appealed to the Ninth Circuit. The Ninth Circuit reversed that decision and sent it back to the district court, essentially for the parties to go through the discovery process, potentially go through another round of summary judgment motions, and then ultimately have a trial if that's what it came to. The primary claim at issue today is whether or not the handcuffs that were placed onto the man's wrists were too tight, and whether or not they caused lasting injury to his hands. As we prepared to go through the discovery process, it became apparent that we were going to need somewhere between three and five experts to effectively defend against litigation. In discussions with the city manager, he did not feel comfortable moving forward with the approval of retaining those experts without the council's blessing due to the extreme cost associated therewith. It's our estimate that retaining these experts, going through the discovery process, and preparing to file another motion for summary judgment, will cost somewhere between two and three times the amount proposed to settle the lawsuit today. It's the city attorney's recommendation that the council approve this settlement now before you, essentially as a business decision, because it will be that much cheaper than even preparing for trial in this matter. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Doug? Okay. Looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson.
I'm going to make a motion that the city settles with the attorney, Mr. John Morris Quirren, for the amount of $70,000.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to settle, to approve the settlement arranged by the, by our attorneys. Any further discussion? Ms. Bybee.
I'm going to go ahead and support this, but this is tough. And in any legal cases, and I'm finding this, as brand of councilperson, that it's tough when you're, we have to make a business decision. My moral integrity in decisions like this is tough for me to make those, but I have to look at the financial impact on the city, so I will be grudgingly accepting this only on a business side of it, not because I think it's the right thing to do.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thanks, Doug. Appreciate it. Okay, next is comments from the public. Anyone in the public want to speak? Comments from the city council and city manager. Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting with a roll call. Chairman Ratty.
Here.
Agency members, Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Martini.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt, absent. Agency Attorney Adams.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any? Okay, seeing none, go to the approval of the agenda. Does anyone want to take any items out of sequence, delete, or add items?
Move to approve as outlined, Madam Chair.
Second.
The second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It passes. I'm looking for an approval of the minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll go to item six, Report of Claims and Bills, Approved for Payment. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve as outlined by staff, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously also. Let's go on to item seven, Public Hearing Consideration and Possible Approval for Victorian Square Property Exchange Agreement. Armando.
Madam Vice Chair and members of the agency board, Armando Ornellis, City Planner. This is the companion item to the, that the city council heard, which provided, did provide its consent for the acquisition and disposition of real property by the redevelopment agency. Basically, the agreement provides for two things, the reconfiguration of these parcels along Victorian Avenue, and then for the exchange of a parcel between, with Wolfhound Holdings, and that would be the new parcel I for their parcel 23 on that map, my point of the map. The new parcel will be created here out of 25 and Part 423. With regard to what the redevelopment agency's role, per NRS 279-631, the agency may proceed with the exchange on the proposed terms, making note of, as Vice Chair Bybee did during the council meeting, of the different appraisal values. If the agency board finds that it is necessary to effectuate the purposes of the redevelopment plan, so staff believe that the agency board, believes that the agency board can make these findings for two reasons. One, it allows for that reconfiguration of parcels, and two, it allows for the exchange of parcels, and therefore the completion of the site assembly over here along the Victorian Avenue frontage. I do want to note that the, per the agreement, the agency is agreeing to include a contractual provision in any agreement that would transfer this parcel to another private party, that would preclude the use of that parcel, the parcel I for non-restricted gaming, and then also that Wolfhound or its successors and assigns our third-party beneficiaries, in other words, they would be able to enforce this provision if the, if the city or agency chose not to. City staff have reviewed this provision with Silverwing Development, and Silverwing does not object to the inclusion of that provision in the agreement. So staff is recommending that the agency board make the finding that the proposed property exchanges as provided for in the agreement, effectuate the redevelopment plan, and approve the agreement.
Do I have questions or comments? Looking for a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, I'm sorry. Do I have a public, hearing public comments on this item?
Chairman Bybee, members of the agency, Dan Reiser with Fenmore Craig. Again, I would incorporate my comments from the previous statements I made on the record before the council, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Comments? Any other, is there any other public hearing on this matter? Okay, public, public hearing is closed. Looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Victorian Square Property Exchange Agreement with the city and Wolfhand, Wolfhound Holdings LLC as presented to the agency board, and to make a finding that disposition of the agency-owned parcel identified as APN 032-136-111, as provided therein for less than fair market value, is necessary to effectuate the Town Center redevelopment plan for the reasons set forth in the staff report, the staff presentation to the agency board, and information provided during the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other comments? I go ahead and have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 8.0, comments. Do I have comments from the public? Seeing none. 8.2, comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer.
I had one, one comment I wanted to make, I think it fits within this, on the public art issue that I had asked city manager Driscoll before to pursue the, I guess this is more of an update for people who, we were just made aware that the public art, the daffodils that are on display in the redevelopment agency one, do, was able to get insurance. That's been resolved, and I know that Tracy and Francine are working on setting up an arts commission and how we handle further, further insurance issues with public art. So the public art issue right now has been resolved with the artist who has the daffodils. It's insured, the fence is down, which is awesome, and so that, that is a resolved issue that we do not need to take any action on. So I appreciate Steve and Francine and Tracy's help with that, and that we move forward with public art and with an arts commission, so I appreciate that.
I'll sleep, I'll sleep much better tonight.
Okay, no other, no other comments? Okay, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.